Okay. So, good evening, everyone. With the time being 6:03 PM on Tuesday, October 27, 2020, I will call this meeting of the Webster School Committee to order. As a reminder, on March 12, 2020, Governor Baker issued an executive order modifying certain requirements of the open meeting law to enable public bodies to carry out their responsibilities while adhering to public health recommendations regarding social distancing. The executive order relieves public bodies from the requirement in the open meeting law that meetings be conducted in a public space that is open and physically accessible to the public, provided that the public body makes provisions to ensure public access to the deliberations of the public body through adequate alternative means. In this case, we're utilizing Zoom, and we've listed information for joining the meeting on the school district website. As another reminder, this meeting is being recorded both audio and video, and that will be posted on the district website as well. So, before we begin tonight, I just would like to take a moment to acknowledge the challenges that this year has presented. In March of 2019, schools across the state were closed because of COVID-19. In Webster, we had fewer than five cases per week at the time. The town and the state has experienced an ebb and flow of cases, and the Webster School District has followed the state's guidance with regard to this virus and the precautions being taken. Recently, I've seen some questions about why we have students on the soccer fields or running cross-country while they're not in the classroom. I'd like to remind folks that this committee originally made the decision to begin hybrid learning on October 19. This would have meant a return to sports in early October and a return to classroom soon after. Sports began as scheduled, and they've continued with limitations and restrictions. What this has meant for our kids, they've been able to get together with their peers and have a much-needed outlet. In the weeks leading up to October 19, our community had an uptick in virus cases, and that pushed us into the red. Now, if we were already in a hybrid at that time, we would likely still be in hybrid, but we weren't. Out of an abundance of caution and in an effort to safeguard our teachers and students, we, as a committee, under Dr. Gogan's leadership, decided to delay the transition to hybrid model and remain remote. I realize that for some, remote learning is hard. For many, it's hugely disruptive to households and for the overall well-being of students and families. While the remote learning has not been without difficulty, I do think it's important to note that our students have been provided with technology device issued by the district, and they're receiving 27 hours of live instruction per week, including unified arts. That has not been a small undertaking. The Webster School District has been following the guidance issued by the state. Now, if you follow the guidance issued by the state, you know that it's changing very frequently. We are committed to the well-being of our students and realize that being with peers and learning and playing is an important aspect of wellness. We're committed to bringing the students back to school, and we're equal to our teachers, staff, and students. I know that Dr. Gogan had a call today with the commissioner, and she'll probably fill us in on likely more changes that have happened. But I would like to invite parents, community members, teachers, to follow your typical communication procedure to address any questions or concerns related to this matter. So what that means is, starting with your building principal, if you have further questions, you can always contact Dr. Gogan or any of our school committee members. We're elected by the community, and we're here to serve all of you. While I can't promise that we're going to make the right decisions in all cases, I do believe that I speak for the whole committee when I say that we're going to continue to make decisions with the best interests of the students and faculty at heart. We're in this together, and we really appreciate all of you that have been tuning in over the last few weeks, and I'm sure there's going to be a lot more developments tonight. So, with that being said, the first item on the agenda is the approval of the September 8, 2020 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you pull the committee, please?
Member Naprata? Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Adamopolis?
Yes.
Member Mallett?
Yeah.
Chair Siddiqui?
Yes. The motion passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the October 13, 2020 minutes. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you pull the committee, please?
Member Naprata?
Yes.
Member Blythe?
Abstain?
Member Adamopolis?
Yes.
Member Mallett?
Yeah.
Chair Siddiqui?
Yes. Motion passes. The next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Good evening, Dr. Gogan.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see everyone's faces and a large crowd with us tonight. I'm going to start my report by giving you a brief update on personnel, and then I have a somewhat lengthy report tonight, so bear with me. We have received the resignation of Frank Sterns in our technology department. We have also received the resignation of Vernon Tyson, a custodian. At this point, our open positions are, we're still looking for a .5 ELL at the middle school, a long-term sub for foreign language at the high school, a bilingual school liaison, a custodian at the middle school, and some technology support personnel, and an administrative school year assistant at Bartlett High School. As we begin to discuss the shift to hybrid, I want to bounce off of what Mrs. Siddiqui has already said. This is definitely a difficult time for everyone, and it's important that we stay united, and we acknowledge that there are challenges for students, there are challenges for staff and families, parents and administrators, and I think we are unified in the agreement that nothing can replace in-person learning, and we are doing our best. So I am going to start by giving sort of a little bit of a recap on where we are and why we've made some of the decisions that we've made and what changes are ahead of us. I think it's important to stress to everyone that a lot of thought went into our remote model, where we have our teachers in school, teaching from their classrooms, with our high-risk students coming in, receiving in-person learning, doing synchronous learning with all other students. Our model is a school day. It's an entire day of learning. Other districts do not have that. We've done a lot of preparation for the remote learning and the idea that we will be shifting to hybrid. That was put out in our Webster Public Schools reopening plan, which went out back in July. The unfortunate reality of COVID is that it's a little bit of a roller coaster, and the landscape keeps changing and the rules keep changing, but we keep plugging at it here in Webster, and we've done, I think, a phenomenal job, and I just want to recap some of the things that we've done. We continue to provide relevant training for our teachers and staff with how to maneuver the new teaching and learning in a blended environment. We, again, as was stated, we've supplied all of our students with one-to-one devices. We have updated our technology resources so that our teachers have tools to maneuver teaching live students in front of them with students remotely. We've provided families that don't have internet access hotspots. Again, we have a full day of learning, and our schedule for remote learning will be the same type of schedule when we shift to hybrid. We didn't want to have another change for kids. Our teachers and administrators and staff across the district are working very, very hard at building positive school classrooms while engaging students and teaching grade-level content. One thing is for sure, teaching and learning during a global pandemic is not easy for anyone, and we need to point that out. We are doing the best we can, and there's some great things happening in our district. We'd like nothing more than to see all of our students return to school, but the reality is COVID has us all on a roller coaster, and we've already seen that. We sent out a notification. We were planning on going to hybrid on October 19, and due to the community spread and it not being centralized in one location, we followed the existing guidance at that time, and we decided to stay in remote, and we left it at that we would stay in remote for at least until we saw three weeks of red. New guidance recently came out. I'm sure that many of you saw the Governor Baker speak today advocating for communities to return to school even if you are in the red. It's important for the community at large and everyone to know that we are constantly taking in new data and trying to make the best decision to keep our students and staff safe and not spread COVID throughout the community. We will be looking at this new piece of this puzzle, and I wanted to give you a snapshot of one of the things that we don't want to have happen is that we move quickly to hybrid and then a week later have to go back to remote. What we're looking to create in Webster is stability for our students and staff and families, and we know that there's a possibility of going through a roller coaster of different school models this year, but we want to make our decisions very carefully. So I'm going to share a little bit of some of the data that we're seeing. As of today, Webster is in the fourth week of being in the red, and we are in the red for the foreseeable future. There are, as of today, 390 cases in Webster. Since we've been in the red metric, not one of the recent cases have been part of assisted living, nursing homes, or rehabilitation centers. The positivity rate in Webster is 3.95% and increasing. I know that every Webster resident received an alert through their phone yesterday, reminding all of our community of the seriousness of COVID and asking people to take those precautions. We look at the community-level data from Mass, the Mass State of Massachusetts, and we also have been following the DESI guidance, and DESI's guidance originally was recommending that school districts stay, not change their school model until they've had three weeks of consecutive reports in a metric area, and that is changing. So, we are in constant contact with our Board of Health, and we are monitoring what we're doing. I do want to share, Monique, if you could share the screen on the DESI guidance, just to give that visual of the model that we have been following with the red, the yellow, the green. So, we are in remote, and we are in the red. And I do want to give you a snapshot, if we could share the current numbers of what we're dealing with in our district. That's the government.
Sorry, let me grab the other one. It's a PDF.
Yeah. So, while Monique is finding that, I will just share with you. There's a lot of moving pieces to making the decision, and I thought this snapshot might help everybody understand some of the things we're dealing with. So this is a chart that shows you from September 22 until today our student and staffs that have been infected in some way by COVID. So, we have sent home or students have called in or staff have called in with COVID symptoms. Forty-nine students have been in this category and 28 staff members. We've had 30 students test negative and 26 staff members test negative. We've had 16 presumed positive symptoms but did not get a test, students, and one presumed positive staff member. We have had 18 students quarantined due to close contact outside of school and seven staff quarantined due to close contact outside of school. We have sent home zero students who have been identified as close contact, but we have had to send home six staff members who have been sent home from close contact in a school setting. We have had three students with a positive COVID test and one staff member. We've had five students under a travel quarantine and zero staff members under a travel quarantine, and currently, as of today, we have three students and three staff waiting for pending results. So with each of those cases, we have to follow the guidelines of quarantining for 10 to 14 days and adhering to them. So there's a lot of moving pieces with that, and one of the pieces that I think is important to bring up tonight is having enough staff to service the students during a COVID global pandemic is a concern, even in remote, and will be a concern when we go into hybrid. We have people absent every day. With the safety guidelines, when we're in remote, there will be a limit of 10 to 12 students in each classroom. We're not seeing people coming in for substitute positions because of the safety guidelines. We're not going to be able to take 10 students from one classroom and push them into another classroom. So, because of the social distancing guidance, I'm bringing that up, not because I'm deterring from moving to hybrid, I just think that this is an important, realistic piece that we need to all understand. With remote, we do have students in school, and we have been challenged with finding coverage. We are pulling paraprofessionals to do substitute teaching, but substitute teaching has a whole new meaning to it than it did last year. When you're a substitute teacher right now, you need to know how to manage the the Google meets and the Zoom meets and the students in front of you. So that's another piece that we also have to consider, so I'd like you to know that. I do want to also inform everyone that the new CDC guidelines that have come out have changed the close contact requirements. It's now 15 minutes cumulative over a 24-hour period as opposed to 15 consecutive minutes. So you could see someone in close contact for three minutes and then see them, and two hours later for another 10 minutes, and then see them again for another two minutes. That is now considered a close contact. So, I have been in very close contact with the Board of Health Director, Ms. Sullivan. I do believe she's on our call tonight, and I think it's important for us as a community to address that Webster is in the red right now. The number of cases are increasing, and it is not in one location. It has spread through the community. The Board of Director has, Board of Health Director, has informed me that not everyone in Webster is following the isolation and quarantine guidelines, now causing some of our first responders to be at risk. The town is actively seeking to find individuals who do not follow the guidance for isolating and quarantining. So, I'm bringing all of this up to show the complexities of moving and shifting and to again restate what Mrs. Siddiqui said. This is a difficult time for everyone, and we want to do the right thing, and we really want our kids back in school, but we want to do it the right way. And so we appreciate everyone's patience. We are all here to answer your questions, and we do understand that families have questions, and we encourage them to go to their building administrator and/or contact me or contact the school committee themselves. And finally, before I move to my other topics tonight, I do want to point out that I think we've done a great job in Webster in terms of communicating our plans, communicating to teachers and staff why we are, where we are, and I think it's important for us to notice what's going on around us. Recently, the following schools have shifted to remote. Clinton, Hudson, Fitchburg, West Boylston, Abington, Milton, and Douglas. And I know people have a tendency to say, why are some people going and another community not going? I think all of the things that I mentioned have to be considered to put the big puzzle together, to see what is the right time to make the shift. I know we will be discussing this at the next school committee meeting as well, but I want our community to know that we are trying to do the best that we can, and we want to acknowledge that we're here to support you. We all wish that it was different. So I didn't know if there were any questions before I move on to the rest of my report.
Okay. Ms. Siddiqui?
Yes, Mrs. Blythe?
Sorry, I was on mute. I was just wondering, thank you, Dr. Gogan. I do believe that that staff and administration have done an amazing job, especially in this trying time. I know I haven't slept since Friday, just working through all of this in my head, so I can only imagine what all of our administrators and teachers and students are going through. I was just wondering, I know we're going to talk about the move plan to try to shift to hybrid at our next meeting. I'm just throwing it out there for other school committee members to kind of maybe have an open discussion on whether or not we should move, you know, where I could make a motion to move to move up the meeting and maybe have a special school committee meeting to discuss that plan before. The 11:10, I believe, is our next meeting. So I'm just kind of throwing that out there. I know it's on everybody's mind. You know, I'd like to look at different data metrics, and I am not a data person, so I don't know exactly what metrics would be better to look at. I just do know that I think we need to move forward and just kind of, you know, move forward with our plan, right, of getting the kids back to hybrid. So I don't know how the other school committee members feel, but I am putting that out there.
Through the chair.
Yep, Mr. Adamopolis?
I would support potentially moving up our next meeting, just so we could have a full and open discussion. I mean, obviously, a lot of information out there now that parents are pushing to get more information. I know personally, Governor Baker's press conference this week put out a lot of information that I was not really aware of, especially the amount in the entire state that are at least in school at some point. I mean, at this point, it's hundreds of thousands of students with only 120, I believe, confirmed cases that have happened in the state, you know, at least indicating that schools may not be as super spread like the initial belief was. So if there was a move to potentially try to move up to a meeting so that we could have a full discussion on where things stand and what the current data points are, I would definitely fully support that idea.
Through the chair.
Yes, Mrs. Mallett?
My opinion is that I think we should wait to our regularly scheduled meeting until we have more data. Webster's going through a very rough period, and as Dr. Gogan had said, residents all received a text yesterday, I know I did, from mass.gov concerning Webster being in the red. And I know we want our students back. It'd be the best thing to have them back, but if we look at the numbers we have now, it may get worse before it gets better. I think we need the time to wait the next couple of weeks to see what happens. As Dr. Gogan said, we don't want to start it again, and in a week have to pull everybody back again home. I think it's better to be, take a little time to be cautious so we can do it safely and for the best of our students, staff, and community.
I do understand what you're saying. I'm not suggesting that we meet earlier to get the students back earlier. I'm just saying, I'm suggesting that we meet earlier in order to create a plan to continue moving forward, to get them back together. So I'm sorry if I didn't communicate my desire, but that is my desire.
Thank you for explaining that. That makes more sense.
Through the chair.
So, you know, I don't feel strongly one way regarding moving a meeting up or having a further and deeper discussion on November 10, when we will have another two weeks' worth of data. One of my concerns is the motion that we made and was passed, I believe it was two meetings ago, or maybe it was last meeting, where we did state that we would be looking for three weeks out of the red, and I'm concerned about that part of the motion. So I agree with Mrs. Blythe that we should be looking at other metrics, because while DESI outlines their recommendations, you know, it is ultimately just a guide, it's guidance, it's not a requirement. So I feel that it would be within our purview to change that motion at the meeting, whether it ends up being on the 3rd or the 10th, and incorporate other metrics rather than the red designation. Because, you know, being optimistic, the hope is, of course, that the numbers of cases or of new cases will decrease as it did this past week and will continue on that trend, again, being optimistic, but it still may take a little while for us to be out of the red designation. So agreeing with Mrs. Blythe and Mr. Adamopolis that, you know, just to confirm that there's a solid plan in place for bringing students back in as soon as we can. And I don't agree with the statement that, you know, we don't want to bring them back because what if it's just for a week and then we have to go back to remote? I think everybody knows that that is going to be a possibility, no matter when we bring them back. So it's just something that parents and schools will need to be prepared for.
So, just to sort of summarize what I've heard, it sounds like there is consensus among the committee that we need to have a dedicated discussion around shifting from a remote to a hybrid model. The question really is, do we need to do that before November 10?
So I feel like if we're going to try to get the students back into school before the end of 2020, then we do have to meet. The earlier the better. I don't know if that's the goal or if that's possible, but the as-sun-as-possible date is where I'm driving toward, right? So I just want to try to get them back into school as soon as possible. That's just my thought.
What is the desire of the committee?
So I would like to make a motion to have a special school committee meeting to discuss moving toward the hybrid plan before November 10. Sorry.
Sorry, second. The chair, I could just add one more comment. If we're going to do a special meeting potentially next week, it's going to be geared just our plan moving forward. I'm not sure if there's any metric of potentially reaching out to the staff and parents directly and trying to get direct feedback from them that could be potentially summarized for us, because obviously, it's the teachers and the parents and the students that are more directly affected by this than... just the committee or the school administration. So the more feedback we can get from what, you know, they're doing on a day-to-day basis and what they may want to see going forward, I think would be definitely beneficial to all of us.
Mr. Adamopolis, I think you make a good point. Dr. Gogan, do you think that, um, I know, um, you, you have conducted surveys in the past to get a pulse on sort of where parents are at? Do you think that a survey, not only for parents, but maybe for teachers or staff as well, would be something we could do? And what's a timeline that would be reasonable?
Well, we can absolutely do a survey, um, for the staff. And I'm sure the staff would fill that out very quickly. I could have that definitely for next week. I can send a survey to, uh, families to, um, see if and who would send their students back. We have recently done that with, um, sending, um, self-addressed mail. But we could send an electronic survey and get our results from there. I, I do think that, um, we can get you that data for next week. But I, and, and I understand, um, the committee's desire to push up a meeting. I just feel compelled to state just two things. One, the cases are increasing in Massachusetts. There are about a thousand people a day getting it, um, so they're not decreasing. And at this point, we've been, uh, able to, as you saw with the data, keep COVID out of the schools. And I think that's directly related to the fact that we do not have a lot of students and staff. And we are adhering to very strict, um, safety guidelines. I am fully aware that we will move to a hybrid at some point. I just am very frightened by the increase of numbers. And I use the word frightened on purpose. That we do, we do not want to become a super spreader place. So I'm, I'm, I'm sharing that with you. But we can certainly, um, do the surveys. I can definitely have that information. So are we looking to do a special, um, meeting next Tuesday?
No, next Tuesday is election day. I don't know how that feels for people.
So.
Do we need to have a date for the purposes of the motion? Or do we just need to, um, determine whether or not the, the, there's consensus from the committee to hold a meeting prior to the 10th?
Are you asking Mo or are you asking?
I'm asking anybody that knows the answer, I suppose.
I think it would be nice to have a date. I think there's a lot of people on this, um, Zoom meeting tonight that are, would definitely like to know. I, I don't know, does Wednesday work? If Tuesday's election day? Oh, no, we have a school building committee meeting, sorry.
I mean, Tuesday would work fine for me.
Have a meeting on an election night.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Right, will Monday work?
Will we have a quorum, uh, members of the committee here? I, I can make a Monday meeting.
Through the chair.
Mrs. Milllet, yes?
I think Monday is rushing things. Or especially for, um, the superintendent to have all that data ready. And I don't think we're going to have all the data enough right now. And I think the sooner we meet, the less we're going to have. We have to be able to have the time to accumulate the data we need to make decisions.
And, you know, Mrs. Milllet, I agree with you. I do think that, you know, in the interest of just tossing this around and, and trying to do what's best, and I think that's, Mrs. Blythe, I think that's what, what your interest is here.
That's correct.
The more information, I'm not suggesting that we wait weeks and weeks and weeks to get more and more data on COVID testing necessarily. But in order to have, um, a good amount of responses from the survey, it would be six days. So, um, but that's not really the question. The question is, are committee members able to be present? So if Dr. Gogan, if you think that you can pull off a survey, I know that the number of respondents we'll get from parents is going to be, you know, up to who responds.
I, I can definitely have the survey for the staff ready for a Monday meeting. I, I anticipate the staff will quickly fill out a survey, but the parents, I can't, I can't promise. I can try. I will do my best. I'll send it.
Speaking of ser, so I don't want to get off topic, but speaking of surveys, um, have we surveyed the high school kids? I know the middle school kids maybe could be surveyed, but, um, and again, if that's a, if that's a sidebar. But, um, I just wasn't sure if we got their thoughts, um, on things or if that's really going through the parents, which is fine as well. So that's probably more of a sidebar, so I apologize.
So I think the first, the, the really, the question at hand at the moment is whether or not members can make a meeting on the second. So we need a quorum, so we need at least three people to be able to be present. I can be present, Mrs. Blythe, you can be present.
I can be present.
Mr. Adamopolis?
You're present.
Okay, Kathy Napparata, Mrs. Napparata? Yeah, Mrs. Milllet?
I can. But I also question, um, besides the surveys, whether we'd have enough data from the town to help us in less than a week.
So through the chair, um, right, I, I know the data comes out every week, um, now on Thursdays. So we will have only the one week. I think the purpose of the meeting might not solely be to get the data. But just as we had done, um, over the summer, I believe, we set a date that we wanted to bring students back. And we had to, you know, revisit that. And that's okay. So I think if the purpose of the meeting could be to determine if we can, again, set a date and see where the data takes us from now until that point. And what is the data that we are going to look at? If that makes sense.
I would think it would be the other way around. To look at the data to be able to predict the date to come back or go to hybrid. I just feel that we are, we're rushing and not going to have everything in front of us that we need. And it's an ongoing investigation into whether we can or cannot come back. It can change daily. I wouldn't want to hold to a date. We are now changing the meeting. So is the meeting to discuss data and what we know? Or is it to set a date? That's two different things.
Through the chair, I think it will be to, um, to discuss how we're bringing, how we're going to bring students back versus solely looking at the current data that we have.
That was my intention. Just like we've done since March, we are planning, we are trying to plan the best we can with the ever-changing data and guidelines that we, that we have received. I just feel it's in the best interest of the students and the families and the staff if we continue to move forward with a hybrid plan. So that is what I am trying to do. I'm just trying to move forward with, with creating this, this plan to get us back and just continue to move forward until the students are back.
So Mrs. Blythe, would you like to amend your motion to be that, um, you're, you're making a motion for a meeting of the school committee on Monday, November second?
That is correct.
Okay. Ms., Mr. Adamopolis, I know you seconded it before, it's a little different now. So I'll leave it for you if you'd like to second that motion.
Second the amended motion.
We have a motion in a second.
Through the chair.
Yes, Mrs. Milllet?
Can we also, um, have the reason for the meeting?
Okay. So Mrs. Blythe, can you please run us through your motion one more time?
Sure, it's all jumbled now.
Yeah, no, that's okay. It's a good point to get it all out there.
I'd like them to make the motion, um, to meet Monday, November second, to discuss the, moving towards the hybrid plan and how, how best to, to get there. Did I get everything? Ms. Milllet?
I think so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a motion, Mr. Adamopolis, would you like to third your second? Yes?
Yes, second.
Thank you. Lori, we have a motion and a second. Would you please poll the committee?
Member Napparata?
Yes.
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Adamopolis?
Yes.
Member Millet?
Yeah.
Chair Siddiqui?
Yes. The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, I have more to my report. Um, I would like to let you know that the, um, town held a, uh, children's flu clinic this past Sa- Saturday. And we had, um, sixteen families sign up. I'd also like to give kudos to, uh, Lori Marazo for organizing yet another annual flu clinic for our staff. This year, it was held at Walgreens outside in a tent. And we had over sixty staff participate. I do want to remind families that the state regulations have changed and all students are expected to have a flu shot before December thirty first. The only exemptions are religious or medical. And I wanted to give you some updated numbers in my report. At this current time, we have seven hundred and forty-three students enrolled over at Park Avenue School. And a hundred and fifty-one of those students have opted for remote only at Park Ave. At the Webster Middle School, we have enrollment numbers of five hundred and seventy-one. And a hundred and fifty-eight of those students have opted for remote only. At Bartlett High School, our total enrollment is three hundred and ninety-three. And a hundred and twenty-nine students have opted for remote only. I think it's important to look at how things are going. Our, uh, teachers are doing a great job with outreach and communicating to our staff. I want to give them a, a shout out. This is not easy, as I stated in the beginning of my report, to, um, teach in a blended learning environment. It's challenging for everyone, but I'm pretty pleased to hear the, these numbers. The number of students that are not logging in for remote learning over at Park Ave is down to six. Uh, it's zero at Webster Middle School and eighteen at Bartlett High School. Uh, our principals and guidance counselors meet weekly to go over students who need extra supports. And there are forty-four students at Park Ave being monitored for low participation. And thirty-five at Webster Middle School and eighteen at Bartlett High School. Our enrollment numbers, as you probably have figured out, have dipped a little bit. Last year, our October thirty, our October first numbers were, um, eighteen hundred and forty-one students. This year, our, our October numbers are sixteen eighty-five. That's a hundred and fifty-six less students. We've seen a decrease in kindergarten enrollment. And we've seen an increase in homeschooling this year. Last year, we had ten homeschool students and this year we have fifty-six. Pleased to let you know that, um, the State Department of Education and state have released some information on the possibility of schools being able to, um, test. It's called the Bionax Now Rapid Point of Care COVID Testing for Schools. Over the course of this year, Massachusetts will obtain two million of these tests. The Department of Education is, um, working with the Department of Public Health to introduce the first phase of this. Um, and we're getting in on it as we always do. We're attending a webinar to see if we might be interested in being one of the districts that receive free tests at no cost. Uh, this isn't a guarantee. We are meeting with our COVID leadership meeting, but we are attending the webinar. So I wanted to let you know that. I also wanted to let you know that goals meetings across the district are underway. So some of those normal things that we do are still happening. I also would like to let you know that the Sustainable Improvement Plans for Webster Middle School and Bartlett High School have been updated and submitted. Both of these schools have submitted their grants. And we have been notified that we will be receiving fifty thousand dollars from Desi for the implementation of the strategies noted in these grants. This is an implementation grant. The priorities for both schools focus on equity and access to high-quality instruction, using data, engaging our students and families through the lens of social emotional supports, and creating strategies for meeting students' needs in a remote slash hybrid setting. The funds will be used to assist our teachers, uh, with the teaching and learning in a blended environment. We're going to hire Rebus and Looney Math to assist with, uh, focusing on differentiated instruction, SEI, student engagement, and using data to inform instructional practices. We will be developing a language acquisition team. So our focus will continue on ELL language proficiency at these schools. And we will also be continuing our work with, uh, PBIS and counseling outreach. Some of our staff will receive extra stipends for their work in that area. I want to give a shout out to, um, Mrs. McKay, Dr. McKay, for, um, jumping right in and working with the two principals, Mrs. Peterson and Mr. Thomas on this grant. They're thinking out of the box and trying to put, um, things in place that are going to help us as we shift from remote to hybrid. And, um, I think the SSOS Desi team was also very impressed with our grant application. And finally, to conclude my report, I do want to let you know that communication and our efforts of communication are flowing across the district. As you know, I meet, uh, very frequently with the WEA and the paraprofessionals, uh, uni- unions. The WEA monthly meetings are scheduled, but in fact, we're probably going to meet, um, weekly. So that concludes my report and I am happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Good, Dr. Gogan. Are there any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none. The next item on the agenda is the Business Managers Report. Good evening, Mrs. Perangeli.
Good evening, Mrs. Siddiqui, thank you. And how, hello, everybody. How's everybody tonight? It's nice to see so many faces, um, to speak with and to let them know what's going on within our school district. First item on the agenda for me is the school building update. Um, as you know, we are moving through, um, a feasibility stage for our project. We are in the designer selection phase. RFS are due in, on Thursday at two o'clock. Those are being sent directly to the OPM that we have representing the district. We did receive confirmation from the MSBA that we are set to go to the designer selection panel on November seventeenth. As I stated at the last meeting, this panel consists of thirteen appointed, um, positions and three representatives from the district. Dr. Gogan, um, Mr. Ted Avalas, and myself will be representing the district. We will have, uh, voting capabilities, the three of us, to vote for a designer selection. Um, it is going to be a Zoom or a teleconference meeting. So it's going to save us the drive into Boston, which is a good thing. We can just park, park in the office and dial in, so that's, that's a nice treat. During that meeting, we will be looking at applications and discussing them with the designer selection panel. And at the end of the meeting, we will be ranking and choosing three finalists. We'll, we'll rank them in order. And from that point, then we will have the discussion on whether we will choose the highest ranked or we will. choose the highest ranked, or we will um ask for interviews. So uh we are looking forward to that. It is progressing smoothly, and um we look forward to the next phase of the project. So I want to thank the community for their support as we move through that. Next item on my agenda, unless there's any questions in regards to the Building Committee? No, okay. Next item is the end-of-year report. As you know, uh in your packet, you should have seen a copy of the end-of-year report. Um that is a financial report that rep- represents the school department and town department budget of monies that go towards the district. So that is completed and was submitted last Thursday. Uh I'd like to thank um the Special Ed Department, Maria, and um Cheryl, and the Town Accountant, Tim Bell, uh for their collaboration on that and getting me the information I need to be able to submit that report. We usually typically get audited in around February on that, and um it it's really an open running report. Uh anything that comes up during the year, if there's changes to our school budget, can be amended at any time. But it's something I really um enjoy working on. It's something that I think you can always get a really good snapshot of where your money's being spent, and it really tells a story about where your resources are going, so. It's it's some something that I'd like to do uh during the year. As sometimes it can be a little stressful, but it when you're finished, it's always um it's it's a great tool to look at. So, thank you for that. Uh next item on the agenda is the town meeting. Uh town meeting was held in our Bartlett Gymnasium on October nineteenth. Um the meeting ran very smoothly. I want to thank the custodians for taking the time and setting that up and working with the town. They made some minor adjustments to the FY twenty-one budget. Really, the school department, um the only thing they added for the school department uh was fifty thousand dollars towards transportation. Uh that's something we will keep an eye on as we move throughout uh the school year. Um right now, transportation is not a problem, but as we um look to getting into hybrid, uh we're gonna have to watch that closely. Some buses are full, but I do believe I have the capability right now to move um groups onto a different run to kind of equal out some of the busing. But it's something that we're paying close attention to, um not just on regular buses, but on special ed buses as, you know, our capacity has been reduced significantly as to um how many we can safely transport. Any questions on that? And then the lo- only couple other things um I'd like to talk about is uh Ms. Napparata, at our last meeting, you had questioned um the tennis courts, and if there would be nets, and I'm going to share. Did I share it? Can you see it?
No, not yet.
Let's see. You got it?
That looks beautiful.
Those look amazing. So you can see the nets in the courts are beautifully redone. There's a few courts there. I'd like to thank our athletic director, Mr. Pronto, for overseeing this project for me. He has worked closely with the company, so I want to thank him for his oversight. Uh they've done an amazing job. This court right here is the court that I was telling you that we did for the community. This is our pickleball court. As you can see here, there is a different outline. Um pickleball is a smaller version of tennis, but a bigger version of ping pong. So picture the middle between ping pong ping pong and tennis, and um this is what you get. It's it's a pretty fun sport, and it's really picking up some speed throughout colleges of really starting to compete in it across the nation, so. We're happy to be able to do this for our community and just really thank them for their continued support through that. And then um those should be open to the public. We're hoping um no rain tonight. If everything stays dry and nothing needs to be touched up or done tomorrow, um we'll have them open for the community to use right away. So hopefully, we're only a day or two away. And then the other thing I just wanted to mention is our food service. Um as I stated at the last meeting, we were trying to start uh bulk mail distribution to help our families. We are continuing with that. We have delivered meals on Monday this week, and we will doing it uh be doing it again on Thursday this week. We're gonna switch, keep to the Monday, Thursday schedule for a while until we have that down pat um and see how the school year progresses. I don't know how hybrid's gonna change that as we move forward. But I think it has been well-received because we did see um an increase in participation of families being able to come pick up meals. So I think having that one time where you can come pick up a few days at a time has really um helped our community members and our families um make that adjustment to come out. So I want to thank Ms. Nyland. She's on the call tonight. She is always, always looking at how we can support the community and how we can best serve the community and make sure that we are doing everything in our power to serve good quality food, hot meals, and make sure that we are getting families what they need. So thank you for that, uh Ms. Nyland. I really appreciate that. And uh we are here for any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Mrs. Perangeli. And again, once again, on the behalf of the committee, uh thank you, Mrs. Nyland, for all the work that you do to feed our kids nutritious food, especially when they're not in the building, but I know even when they are in the building, they always look forward to their lunches and breakfast. So thanks for all that you and your team are doing. Any other questions or comments from Mrs. Perangeli? Okay, well, thank you, Mrs. Perangeli.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the Principals Report. Joining us tonight is Fran Thomas, the Principal of Bartlett High School. Good evening, Mr. Thomas.
Good evening, Miss Siddiqui. How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
I'm okay. Little chilly in here. I don't know if Mo's trying to save money on the heat, but got my jacket on here.
We need to save money for those buses, Mr. Thomas.
Okay. Thank you for having me this evening. Um the first thing, I believe you have in your packet, the list of our twenty-five students who have earned the Abigail Adams, John and Abigail Adams Scholarship winners. So we have twenty-five students. That's quite an accomplishment. You have to reach the highest levels of MCAS, um an exam that no one really gets enthused about taking. But these students um did very well, and again, these these scholarships are earned on the basis of their performance in its across the entire state, so. Outstanding job, and I know that Viv is here. She is one of our recipients. So nice job, Viv. I don't know, uh you have those in the packet. I don't want to read them out loud and and be repetitive. Been here for a while. Uh normally, we would have a uh a breakfast for them or some sort of thing like that, but obviously, in this situation that we're in, that's not possible. Any questions on that? Okay, moving right along. Uh the second thing I want to talk about is our innovation pathways. We have preliminary indication that we received the the full amount that we asked for in our planning grant. The um state does a kind of like, they let you know, but they don't ask, they ask that you don't do a press release or anything because the state wants to do uh release the embargo to all the winners at the same time and have their own press release. So we've gotten a letter that we have this amount. But we're not gonna, we can't like have our own press release right now, but we got twenty, um just under thirty thousand dollars to do that, and our pathways are advanced manufacturing and healthcare and human assistance. And um I've been able to through a mass higher central workforce board and a mass manufacturing extension partnership, have been able to line up some pretty impressive uh industry partners. Uh for healthcare and human assistance, we have UMass Memorial Medical Center. We have Open Sky Community Services, uh and we have Christopher House Rehabilitation and Skilled Nursing Center. And for uh manufacturing, we have IPG Photonics and Gentex. So those those people have committed to help us develop these these pathways and eventually down the um further down the line to have um worksite experience for our kids, which is something that's gonna be um extremely helpful. We're gonna be able to graduate students who have are ready to enter the workforce at living wage jobs with the skill set already, and the employers have also indicated that when they recognize people with potential, they will further train them, pay them to go to school, et cetera. So those are the two highest um labor demand areas projected in the greater Worcester area over the next uh five to seven years. So that was what, that's one of the criteria of the innovation pathways. So the next step in that process is to complete the Part A of the designation. They gave us a planning grant. We have to get the official designation. Part A is due Friday, which is why I'm still here, and then um Part B is due sometime in February. Once you get that official designation, then that opens the door to um additional grants such as a capital skills grant. I think uh as Dr. Gogan has alluded to several times in the past, the timing for this with the MSBA renovation is perfect so that people can, our industry partners can come on board and kind of have a say in, you know, what a machine shop should look like, what type of equipment we need, where we would house it. So the timing is really excellent for that. So I'm very pleased that um we got that. I also updated you on some of our advanced coursework and dual college, and I believe when I started, uh there were three students the prior year that had taken uh advanced courses, dual dual college courses at uh Nichols. Last year, that was up to uh seven that we got that took those advanced course. Right now, we have fourteen students currently in a Quincy Community College course earning three credits, and we have, they just opened up a Nichols one, and I believe there were six students that were signed up for that already. So the idea is that we offer these happier courses that students can earn three credits. They're open to juniors and seniors. In the past, I think we've had uh an overreliance on students taking advanced placement tests, either because of a requirement for Nichols or in the hopes of gaining three credits. So my goal is to have students take an AP exam because they want to take it, because they're interested in that subject, not because they have to or chasing three credits, because our success rate wasn't very high. That's also on my agenda. But if you are a junior, you could take a um dual college entry each semester, and by the time you graduate, have twelve to fifteen credits in your pocket already when you graduate, and then you could take your AP exam and get the three credits there. So that's almost like a a semester paid for right away. And if you're going into a two-year situation, you're halfway there when you graduate from Bartlett High. So that's something that um we're working on and continue to um promote. And there are no prerequisites for these courses. So it's not something that a student has to have passed a previous class. They can just, something that interests them, they can take it. The other thing I want to talk about is our One Goal Program. This also fits into our our plan of offering multiple pathways for students. The One Goal Program is a combination of classwork and almost like mentorship. They stay with a cohort for three years, so they kind of guide them through the college process. It's um it's designed for first-generation uh college students. So no one in their family has gone to college before, so even those of us who have gone through college and have had children go through college, the maze of applications and FASFA and all that kind of stuff is difficult. If you have no one in your family who has done it before, it can be quite an impediment. So this program takes these students, follows them, make sure they do all the financial aid work, get all their um materials in on time, and it stays with them through their freshman year in college, because that's the highest time that that students drop out. So it stays with them at through their freshman year. We have a a three-year commitment to do this. I believe my phrase is is gonna help underwrite it, so there'll be three cohorts this year, next year, and the following year. Yeah, I think the fact that they um stay with these students through their freshman year is really important because that's a that's a time fraught with peril for students who have not had people undergo that college experience before. In many cases, it's their first time away from home. They have different responsibilities. There's no one waking them up, making sure they're going to class, that sort of stuff. So that this is a really important program for us. And then the last thing, I put down our our AP scores, and this kind of um gets back to my earlier point of trying to make sure students are taking AP exams because they are interested in the subject, not because they have to. So you can see, if you look at the numbers, we had less students take AP exams in two thousand twenty than we did in the prior two years, but we have more students may meet the qualifying score. So that tells me that we're having students um who are interested in this subject, and that's why they're taking the exam. And that also looks better because if we have a lot of students take the test but don't meet the qualifying score, colleges kind of look at us and say, well, how rigorous are your AP courses? And then that doesn't help students who do qualify, so um trying to just give a variety of ways for students to earn college credits, uh get those AP scores where they want to be and uh make a better presentation to colleges when they graduate and and start the application process. So I know that was kind of lengthy, so I thank you for your patience and time, and I would be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Siddiqui?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Thomas, I just was wondering on the timeline to um implement the innovation plans that you have. When do you expect this to roll out?
We have to, we have to launch in the fall of uh twenty twenty-one with our incoming freshman class.
Great, so super quick.
Yeah, so a lot of the work we will be doing will be uh gathering up um the scope and sequence, courses that we have to take. Some of the healthcare and the human assistance uh courses that we already have, because they're gonna need to be heavy on biology, anatomy, physiology, and that sort of stuff. But our industry partners will help us kind of embed those with some of the skills that that they're needed. So there may be new lab work. There is a small amount of money in there for equipment that we can use to try to get them there, and and some of the courses we may have to redesign. The manufacturing one is um some of the things that that we will offer are things that we want to offer, like uh coding for automation, maybe robotics, things like that, principles of engineering, so there may be some um course design. The heavier work will be, how do we structure our program studies so that by the time these kids are seniors, they can do a capstone project or an internship and get credit for it, and how that fits within our our credit um graduation requirements. That's that's gonna take some time, but uh it has been done in other districts, so it's not like we're gonna reinvent the wheel. We just have to make sure it aligns with with what we have.
This is great. Thank you. Thank you.
Very exciting opportunity for the students to um finish Bartlett with um whether it be college classes or ready to enter the workforce already. You know, in their possession, so that's it's a great opportunity. Very excited to see where this goes. Are there any other questions or comments from the committee? So the next, thank you, Mr. Thomas.
You're welcome.
The next item on the agenda is um an update from our student representative, Vivian Popowski. Hi, Vivian.
Hi, good evening, everybody. So for academics, progress reports were sent out October seventeenth, and eligible applicants for the National Honor Society were contacted, and there was a Zoom meeting held on Friday. And applicants are due November fourth. And students feel very burnt out from distance learning and are definitely looking forward to heading back as soon as possible. For athletics, the boys' golf team played Sutton on Wednesday, October twenty-first, and girls' soccer played Uxbridge on Monday, October nineteenth, and Wednesday, October twenty-first. And boys' soccer also played Uxbridge on Monday and Wednesday. And then girls' and boys' cross-country played Sutton on Friday, October twenty-third. And students are valuing the time they spend at sports and are hoping that they will be able to continue. And the girls' soccer team actually wrote a letter that they wanted me to read out to you. To member the school board, as seniors and captains of the Bartlett Girl Soccer Team, we'd like to speak for ourselves and our teammates by saying thank you for supporting the soccer program. It's a difficult time for everyone, and soccer has been an important physical and mental outlet for us. Due to the mandated quarantine earlier this year, many of us have stayed in our homes, which has caused us to lose the upbeat routine we were so used to. Many of us were also stuck in a funk due to the lack of activities we were allowed to participate in. However, this all changed when soccer got the okay to begin again. Our team is not able to get back to a healthy routine because of the exercise and interactions we have at practice. After a long day being in front of our computers, we look forward to spending time outdoors with our team playing a sport that we love. We make sure to follow the guidelines, wearing masks, staying six feet apart. We do our best to keep all contact to a minimum when playing on the field. Our coaches enforce these guidelines at the game in order to make sure that we stay safe. Our coaches also sanitize the soccer balls and wash all of their equipment we use at practice and games. We have hands and eyes are available at all times, so we made sure to use that as well. We enjoy working hard to represent Bartlett. We thank you all very much for your endless support of the program. We thank the Bartlett Girls Soccer Team. And the cross-country captains also wanted me to say thank you for supporting the program and allowing it to run this year. As far as extracurriculars go, the music boosters are selling butter braids and cookie dough to benefit the music department, and that's going to be going on until November second. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Vivian. And once again, on behalf of the committee, I would like to thank the soccer team, the cross-country teams, the golf teams for representing not only Bartlett High School but Webster. They do us proud every time they're out there and happy to be able to support them and happy for all the, all the times that they're spending out there. I know that it's much needed. So thank you for your updates.
Ms. Siddiqui? Sorry, I feel like I have a thousand questions. Vivi, you mentioned that the students are feeling kind of burnt out, right? And not so energized. I'm kind of wondering, you know, how remote learning is going otherwise, right? And I'd like to kind of get your opinion as well as Mr. Thomas's opinion from the, at the high school level. Just kind of feel, you know, how it's going overall.
So I think the main cause of the burnout that all the students are feeling is just that every day feels very repetitive. Like with the schedules not rotating, I feel like that's a huge factor that every single day is just the same exact thing. So I feel like if we're going to have to continue remote learning for a little while, a small change that could be made to make it better for students would be rotating the schedules. And some teachers are assigning a lot of homework, which is making like affecting a lot of students and giving them a lot of anxiety because they spend six hours sitting at their computer in classes, and then they have to spend three more hours doing their homework in the same spot. So I feel like all of that added up has just made it a very mentally draining experience.
Yeah, I can understand that. Thank you. Thank you for sharing that. Mr. Thomas, do you want to add anything to that? I'd just like to see it from your view.
Well, I think Dr. Golden, Dr. Gogan alluded to this earlier, like no one thinks that this remote learning is the ideal situation for anybody. But, you know, Viv and some others have, have reached out to me and it's it's a very draining situation for students and staff. And I can appreciate Viv's comments on the schedule. But when we designed the schedule, we, you know, had to keep in mind that we're going to have two different cohorts, that there was a strong possibility of going that too remote from hybrid and so forth. So we wanted to keep it as simple as possible. We also have to meet our timer and learning goals with the state. And, you know, as far as homework, teachers are juggling their kind of acknowledgement of the difficulties this is for students. But on the other hand, we're getting, the commission is saying you will do MCAS in January, you will do MCAS in May. You still have your AP exams, your honest courses, that sort of stuff. So they're trying, you know, everyone's doing their best that they can to try to balance those, those needs. But as I've said many, many times, no one, no one got into education to, to be a virtual teacher. You know, the kids are the reason that everybody got into this business. So we're definitely missing them. I, I kind of equate it to the go to a cemetery or park and they have those like solar flares that they, they soak up the energy during the day and then at night they light up. What's kind of like, we're not getting that energy during the day. So it's just the lights on, but we're not getting that feedback from the kids. And you know, Viv can tell you, she runs across that, like the kids run by, I jump up and wave to them. I go to the game. I mean, we're definitely missing, missing the kids and I, I know they're missing us. Everyone's doing that the best they can, but I think, you know, I don't want to say you know, what a timetable should be. I just think that this model that we're under is not sustainable on either end. I think that the burnout rate is very high. And Dr. Gogan said that in her preamble, like this is very tough for everybody. It's very difficult. It's not an ideal learning situation. And I think at the, the high school, it's even more so because the social aspects of school are such an important part of a high school experience. And these students have been without this since last March. So I mean, the only semblance of normalcy that they have right now is the sports that we're doing and some of the extracurricular things that we're trying to get done. So that's added an element of normalcy familiarity to them, but it's a, it's a tough situation all the way around. And like everybody else, I wish it could go back to normal. I know that that's not going to happen. And we have huge health guidelines that we have to follow. And safety is everyone's concern, but I just think it's it's, you know, it's one of those situations where the sum total is where we're losing right now in terms of energy and enthusiasm, motivation. I think there's great teaching going on. But like Viv can probably tell you, she goes, she does a task and moves to another task. It's not the same as, you know, like learning in an in-school environment where you're learning from your peers as well as the teacher and that interaction and stuff makes learning stick. So it's a difficult situation. But I think everybody involved, from the district level, from the PD that they gave us to the teachers now is doing an outstanding job. It has done so since March. But it's a, you know, it's a very, very difficult, draining situation.
Thank you. I am, I also just wanted to mention that I have been able to attend a couple of the soccer games and it is really good to see the girls out there. You know, and I, you can imagine my surprise when in between quarters, I had to ask what was happening. And here comes Mr. Pronto with the, with the the sanitizing gun and wiping down the ball. I said, oh, we can't get any safer than this. So thanks, Tony, for keeping it going. But thank you, Mr. Thomas. Thanks, Vivi.
Are there any other questions or comments from the committee? Okay. Well, hearing none, the next item on the agenda under old business is the closeout of the FY twenty budget. Mrs. Prangeli?
Thank you, Ms. Siddiqui. In your packet, you should have received a copy of the FY twenty final budget. I talked a little bit about that at the last meeting. We were starting to go over for the end of year report and prepping the budget. There were some changes made. It looks like we, not looks like, we did give seventy-four thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars and nine cents, which will be returned to the town. We have worked closely with them and we feel good about the school year budget and how it ended up. And it has all been finalized. So we are in a good spot right now. We will be working and starting very soon on our FY twenty-two budget. So as one closes, another door opens and we will be digging in and prepping for the future. So I'm happy to put that budget to rest. Any questions?
Well, on behalf of the committee, I would just like to thank you for, once again, delivering a budget that was came in under what we projected to spend. And it's always nice when we can give something back to the town. So thank you, Mrs. Prangeli.
Thank you.
And the next item on the agenda under new business is the approval of superintendent twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one goals. Dr. Gogan?
Thank you. I'm not muted, am I? As you know, as I stated in my report, it's goal season for everyone. You have a full, complete goal, goals for your approval tonight. My goals are aligned to the district strategic plan, our instructional strategies, and definitely teaching and learning during a COVID global pandemic. Each goal is outlined in accordance to the DESI standards. I have goals for instructional leadership, management and operation, family and community engagement, and professional culture. I am more than happy to sit with new school committee members and go over my past goals and evidence binders and talk about these in depth. But they are here tonight for your approval.
Thank you, Dr. Gogan. Are there any questions or comments from the committee regarding the superintendent's goals for this coming year? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the goals as presented.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lori, would you poll the committee, please?
Member Naparada?
Yes.
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Adamopolis?
Yes.
Member Mallett?
Yes.
Chair Siddiqui?
Yes. Passes unanimously. So the next item on the agenda is reading of policies. There's a number of policies that need to be approved. This would be the first reading. Forgive me for the alphabet soup that I'm about to say, but this is the first reading of policies AC, JB, JBA, JFBB, JFE1, JFE2, JJE, JLDE. So that's just the first reading. There's no motion there, right, Lori?
There is no motion. I just want to bring attention to the school committee, why those policies are up. They are existing policies. When we were gathering documents for our special education coordinated program review, it came to our attention that in two thousand and sixteen, when they last updated the protected classes and included gender ID identification, they inadvertently dropped national origin as part of their disclaimer. So we're putting national origin back into the policies AC, JB, JLDE. And we're asking for your approval. I do want to note that there are other policies listed. JBA, JFE, JFE2, JJE. They're no longer MASC policies. So I believe this could be a first and final read just to accept these, putting national origin back into those policies. AC. It's alphabet soup. The three, the three policies, which are equal educational opportunities, the guidance program policy, and the non-discrimination policy.
So I'll entertain a motion to approve these as the first and final reading of these policies.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you poll the committee, please?
Member Naparada?
Yes.
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Adamopolis?
Yes.
Member Mallett?
Yes.
Chair Siddiqui?
Yes. The motion passes unanimously. And, you know, I have to apologize. I just realized that I went out of order. I went from A to item C on our list. And I skipped the approval of sports while in remote. So if we can just go back to that, the next item on the agenda will be the approval of sports while in remote.
Thank you. As we have been discussing, because we are currently in remote, I'm seeking a school committee approval to continue with the sports for the kids, noting that the COVID leadership team and the board of health director have been addressing the safety guidelines with Mr. Pronto. And Mr. Pronto has the heavy task of managing the guidelines. And as you've heard from Vivian tonight and from the letter in the girls soccer team, that the kids are finding a lot of benefits from the programs, which we, nobody would argue against. It's the safety guidelines that we want to make sure that we're still following. And Mr. Pronto is addressing any concerns as they arise. I do want to point out that the, this pro, this fall program probably ends around November twentieth. So I'm asking for the school committee to continue to let the program be in effect.
Thank you, Dr. Gogan. Are there any questions or comments from the committee about this?
Through the chair. Just, just on behalf of the student athletes that are participating, I just want to thank you, Dr. your support and Mr. Pronto for all your work that you're doing with the coaches and the players. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Naparada.
Through the chair.
Yes, Mrs. Mallett.
I have a question. Are we voting on approval of sports while in remote until November twentieth?
If my understanding is correct, it sounds like, as you know, we, we already voted for the sports to happen, but that was under the assumption that we would be moving to a hybrid model. And since we now haven't, it sounds like Dr. Gogan, you're looking for us to approve only what we've already approved for sports.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Only what we've already approved. And the reason that I need a vote is because the Department of Education has stated that if you are in remote, the school committee must approve that. So that's why it's on the agenda.
Thank you for clarifying. Are there any other questions or comments from the committee?
Sorry, through the chair. Mr. Pronto, I wonder, is there any information about winter sports? I know that's not something that we would be prepared to discuss or vote on tonight. I'm just wondering if there are any updates or discussions. Or is it just not a possibility?
Through the chair.
Yes, Mr. Pronto.
To answer your question, we're still following guidance from the state right now for winter. There's, it's an ongoing process. The MIAA committee just came through unanimously that they will not support it, but they do want the schools to support some type of winter athletics. So similar to what the fall is doing right now, they will not have any state tournaments or district tournaments, but they still want schools to try to go forth with having winter seasons. Track would be difficult because of the limitation of facilities. Because us currently have, only have Northridge and Tantascwood to, to lean on. You know, so winter track might be very difficult, but for basketball season, they're still trying to come up with a plan. And how are they going to do it? If it's going to be just players only and no spectators? Or are they gonna do, they're going, because of the confines of the indoor facilities, obviously is concerned through state regulations right now. Having outdoor facilities with soccer and golf and cross-country is a little different beast to attack right now. So we're still waiting on guidance. They're seeing, I guess, what's going on right now is they're seeing how soccer is going, and it seems like it's going pretty well throughout the state. So I think that's kind of like a guinea pig mode right now. They're trying to figure out if that's going to, you know, go through and the kids are experiencing that with the limitation, the modifications. Obviously, basketball have multiple modifications as soccer did. So we're still waiting on guidance right now. I know I'm running around the, the question right now because I'm still waiting for answers. But we're in meetings weekly, sometimes five days a week, trying to figure out how we're going to accommodate basketball season and potentially track and winter cheer. That's what we offer for our, for our district right now. So as, as, as I get word, I will be passing along to the school committee once I find out.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Pronto. Thank you, Mr. Peranto. Are there any other questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the continuation of sports while in remote.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Lori, would you poll the committee, please?
Member Naparada?
Yes.
Member Adamopolis?
Yes.
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Mallette? Member Mallette?
Far. Yes.
Chair Siddiqui?
Yes, the motion passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is approval of snow days being remote learning days. Dr. Gogan?
Thank you. The commissioner of education has informed school superintendents that snow days can be scheduled as remote learning days if that is approved by the school committee. It is my recommendation that we approve snow days as learning, remote learning days, so that we don't have to make the day up. I do want to point out that if we happen to have a snow day and it's, we do not have power, I will have to request a waiver to the state to count it as a asynchronous learning day. But if we have our plans set in advance for what type of asynchronous learning, we'd be able to prove that the kids were doing something and it wouldn't have to be a day that would be made up. So I am approving the school commit, I am asking the school committee to approve having snow days be remote learning days. I think this year is going to be long, no matter how we slice it. And we don't want to make it longer with having to make up snow days.
Thank you, Dr. Gogan. Are there any questions or comments from the committee?
Through the chair.
Yes, Mrs. Napperata.
So the teachers would still be reporting to the school?
It would depend on the snow. I, I think when, when you call a snow day, generally it's for safety reasons, right? So we wouldn't be asking teachers to drive into school on a, on a snow day. We'd have to have them prepared to be working remotely for those days from their homes. That's why we call snow days is it's a safety reason. You know, sometimes it's for the buses. But if it's a very bad storm, we certainly wouldn't expect people to be coming in. So I think that would have to be communicated as the type of storm. But certainly, safety is always our priority.
Okay. And I guess the reason why I was questioning was because you talked about losing power and I, and I immediately thought like at the schools.
Yeah, like in the community. So if, if we had no internet, like, um, you know, we've had ice storms where we all lose power. And I think the commissioner is just putting that out there that on days when you don't have access, internet access, there would have to be a waiver for that day.
I see.
So I'm thinking ahead stating that if our teams of teachers had asynchronous plans that were set, previously set, we could say we did this and then show we did this and get the waiver. Kids, students and parents don't want to make up a snow day this year.
Right. Okay. So yes, thank you for the clarification. I wanted to be sure teachers were not going to be expected to go in.
Safety first.
It's, I think sometimes it's one of the reasons we become teachers, so we don't have to drive in the snow.
Yeah.
Not in the summer months, but.
So, I feel like distant memory now. Go ahead.
So, Dr. Gogan, are you kind of thinking, thinking of it as kind of what the high school does now in the, like Friday afternoon? Like an asynchronous day? So they'll have assignments and they'll be able to go in. Um, I'm just trying to gauge, right? Because if the students don't have power or the teachers don't have power, we, I just don't want them kind of behind.
It's all new. So if we all had power and it's a snow day, it would be a regular day. It would be a regular remote day. Our teachers would just be teaching from home. Our students would be home connected. If we don't have power, that's where we look at the asynchronous assignment, whether that's a project-based assignment and then we apply for a waiver. You know, this is completely new. I don't know what will happen if half the kids have power and half the kids don't. We're basically looking to walk into a snow day and say, we're going remote. Let's plan on having that count as a time on learning day. And then we'll have to handle the no power situation if and when we cross that bridge.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Gogan, you made a good point. I mean, sometimes part of the town experiences, whether it be a power outage or an internet outage and others are unaffected. And I imagine the same would be true for teachers, whether they're living in town or in another county. And some may have electricity and some may not. So have we thought about how we might handle that kind of a situation? I know we're getting a little granular, but I think we just want to make sure that our, whatever plan we approve here today will be working for us.
Well, I think what I'm looking for is for you to approve a snow day as a remote day if we have internet service. And I think if we don't have internet service, we're going to have to look at the data. And it may be a day that we would have to make up. I would have to apply for a waiver knowing how many people had, how many people were on. So I, I can't specifically give you the details until I would know what happened. I'm not sure how the commissioner is going to handle that. I think this is, this is, these are the uncomfortable realities of COVID. That we don't have all the answers until we experience them and then we figure out the answers. My hope is that we have snow days and everybody has power and it can count as time on learning and we don't have to make the day up. And we'll have to cross the bridge on the power piece and the waiver when and if we get to that. I suspect it's going to be a year with a lot of snow days because I just have that feeling. So I think if, if I could have you approve having snow days with internet service be a remote learning day, it would be, it would, we'd be able to plan for that.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve snow days being remote learning days.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you poll the committee, please?
Member Naparada?
Yes.
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Adamopolis?
Yes.
Member Mallette?
Yeah.
Chair Siddiqui?
Yes, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
And the next item on the agenda is the review, transfer, signing of warrants, bills, payroll and vouchers. Anyone have any questions about the warrants that were presented? Okay. So Mo, I assume, Mrs. Parenti, you're going to need your typical designees.
Yes, please. And Ms. Siddiqui, if you could stop in also, I need you to sign a document for me.
Happy to. Okay. Right. So we've exhausted our agenda and I will now entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you poll the committee, please?
Member Adamopolis?
Yes.
Member Naparada?
Yes.
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Mallette?
Yeah.
Chair Siddiqui?
Yes, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you. Good night.